The case before you is small-scale map amendment 2403006 and LUP 2312360. The applicant, Jim Hall, has requested a change to the future land use map designation of the 18.36 developable acre property from rural settlement 1 to 5 to institutional, and to rezone the property to PD. The FAR for non-residential uses in rural settlement is 0.15. The applicant is proposing Special Hearts Farm, a training and learning campus for adults with special needs. The development program includes the following uses: 8,000 square feet of residential care for up to 30 residents. Residential care would be in the form of cottages, each cottage with up to six residents in a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath cottage with a full kitchen and a common room. It would also include a 3,500-square-foot event barn, 1,700-square-foot caretaker residence, 12,000 square feet of barns, and a 15,000-square-foot training facility. This is a total of 40,212 square feet for an FAR of 0.0465 below the FAR of 0.15 allowed for non-residential uses in rural settlements. It's located in District 1 at 4151 Avalon Road, generally located on the northeast corner of Avalon Road and Dangler Road. The property is currently vacant and was previously used for ag. Special exception was approved in 2018 in the A1 zoning to allow for an equestrian center with ancillary uses on the property. This expanded aerial view shows surrounding non-residential land uses. To the south is the County Water Conserv II Rapid Infill Basin Site and Pump Station. To the north includes landscape nurseries, churches, and an equestrian center. And to the west, more landscaping uses. The underlying future land use designation of this area is rural settlement 1 to 5. Smaller 2- and 1-acre rural settlement lots to the south and north in the lighter green The requested future land use designation is institutional. Subject property is currently zoned A1, and the requested zoning is PD. A community meeting was held on May 30th with 55 residents in attendance, both in favor and opposed. The main concern for those opposed is the introduction of institutional uses within the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement, and the precedent that that may establish. Additional concerns were raised regarding hours of operation, traffic, septic tanks, and density. A second community meeting is tentatively scheduled for September 18th prior to the BCC public hearing. We received approximately 50, 50, five zero, letters in opposition with concerns of incompatibility, precedent-setting, and impacts to rural character. We've also received 16 letters of support, many from parents and grandparents of children and grandchildren attending the Special Hearts Program urging your support. The DRC approved the land use plan at their June 12th meeting, subject to 19 conditions of approval, including one waiver from the code included in the staff report. That waiver will allow up to 50 parking spaces in an unimproved area in lieu of improved surface areas for overflow parking related to special events and use of the event barn. It's a photo of the site again. And finally, staff recommendation is to make a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan, recommend adoption of the requested institutional flume designation, and recommend approval of the Special Hearts Farm PD/LUP dated received July 15, 2024, subject to the 19 conditions of approval, including one waiver from the code listed in the staff report. And staff and the applicants are available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, sir. Rick Geller, Fishback Dominic, 1947, Lee Road, Winter Park 32789. I am joined by Kathy Mina, who's the president of Special Hearts Farm, and I'm going to let her go first, once we have the PowerPoint up and running.
My name is Kathy Mina. I live at 10557 Oak View Point Terrace, Gotha, Florida, 34734. So I just want to tell you a little bit about the Special Hearts Farm. Let me see if I can get this up. So who we are. The Special Hearts Farm is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit organization, and what we provide is adult day training. Our participants are age 22 and above. They've aged out of the public school system. We provide a meaningful day and supported employment in farming and gardening opportunities. We also provide entrepreneur and business opportunities. We have a small farm store where they learn to make farm products. They sell their farm products in our store, such as goat milk soap, rustic signs, soy candles. We are also a collaborative effort with Orange County Public Schools by providing a true transition opportunity for those students that have aged out of school as well, so they can continue learning jobs in farming and gardening industry. This is just some pictures of our farmers, special farmers, at work, doing woodworking, providing animal care, making the goat milk soap, working in the garden, harvesting the garden, and participating in the farmer's market with our farm products. So why the need to expand? Currently, we are located on the old Maxi Elementary Campus in Winter Garden, Florida. And for our participants, we are filled to capacity with a waiting list. That pretty much proves the crucial need for these type of programs for individuals with special needs. We also want to build an event-training work barn and provide more supported employment opportunities for the special needs community. We do hire and pay our farmers for supported employment opportunities. We want to eventually provide residential housing, which we cannot do on a school property. And we were blessed two years ago to receive state appropriations funding to build the Special Hearts Farm Forever Home Project, which is going to be a bright star for not only Orange County but the entire state of Florida. So what does that mean for our family members? Well, it provides their special needs loved one with a meaningful day, knowing that they're safe. It also allows them to continue working, not have to give up their job, leave their employment, to provide care for their loved one during the day. It provides their loved one with training opportunities and supported employment opportunities for jobs. We promote lifelong learning, continue that in a happy setting, and we also serve our community by providing meals on wheels. That's just one of the things we do in the community. So also, moving and expanding, it would provide residential opportunities for their loved ones when they're no longer there, so that they don't become homeless. And I know a lot of you did receive letters of support, but we also have an additional 1,100 signatures in favor of our project we'd like to turn into you. I don't know who we need to give those to. And I just want to leave you with one thought. Did you know that nearly one quarter of individuals experiencing homelessness have a disability? And that 80% of all individuals with disabilities are unemployed? Thank you.
You know, in my 30-plus years of practicing law, this is probably the most extraordinary client I've ever met. I've never had a client whose core mission like this is giving unconditional love, and that's what they do. My section of this presentation is why this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the area, and we wholeheartedly agree with the staff recommendation of approval, and we're very appreciative for that. Staff is mandating institutional future land use in the rural service area here. There's no other way to do this. We've explored this ad nauseam with staff. There is no other way. This cannot be done by special exception. We must have institutional use. And you can see in Future Land Use Policy 1.1.4 that institutional and educational designations may be located within the rural service area on a limited basis, as may be expressly allowed by other goals, objectives, and policies in this comprehensive plan. And I'm not going to go through all 17 policies, but there is an extraordinary number of policies that this project is consistent with. And here they are. And I'm going to point out just a few of them, and then also some policies that were not in the staff report that I want you to be aware of. First, as to Policy 1.1.4, institutional uses can have an FAR of up to 2.0. Our FAR, it was, and Mr. Rasta said it was like 0.46, something, it was just de minimis, totally consistent with the rural area that we are in. Flu 1.1.2 is dispositive, completely dispositive here. A community residential home, a CRH, is defined in the Florida statutes as a dwelling unit licensed to serve residents who are clients of the agency for persons with disabilities. That's what the Special Hearts Farmers are. They are clients of the APD. And here's what this policy states. A CRH, one of those community residential homes, that serves six or fewer residents shall, and I double underline "shall," this is mandatory, shall be permitted in any residential or rural agricultural future land use designation or zoning district. That includes this one. And you'll see in our conceptual illustration here, there are five residential cottages behind the existing caretaker's house. And these residential cottages are way in the back. They will not even be able to be seen from Avalon Road. They will be blocked by the vegetation, by the agricultural training center on the right, by the existing animal barn in the middle, and by the agricultural event barn on the left. This is existing, as you saw on the overhead, as well as the parking lot there. Special Hearts Farm requires a rural setting and zoning for its operations, and that's just a matter of common sense. Policy 6.1.13, Orange County will support the creation and availability of fresh food initiatives and efforts, including local farmers' markets and other small-scale agricultural efforts. Special Hearts Farm Farmer's Market will be open one day a month, one weekend a month. The county requires, if you were to look at the use tables in our code, the county requires the raising or keeping of goats, cows, pigs, and ponies in rural districts. Objective in our housing policy, H1.7, Orange County shall, double underline, mandatory, promote and facilitate housing production to serve the population with special needs, including but not limited to farm workers and developmentally disabled persons. So we're two-for-one on this. Going to the state statute, 381.00896, each county must permit a sufficient number and sufficient types of farm worker housing facilities to meet local needs. We have incontrovertible evidence from Ms. Mina that we have an unmet need, that they are at capacity. All right? Finally, you're going to hear a lot of, "We love Special Hearts Farm, but we just don't want institutional use." Here's the thing, there is protection for the rural settlement if you do institutional use. Here it is, and this is from the staff report. Land Use Policy 6.1.4 states institutional uses shall not be an impetus for additional urban development in the rural service area, shall not be an impetus for additional urban development. This protection would not exist for any other possible way, if it existed, of allowing the Special Hearts Farm here. And so we have a PD that's been submitted here. It sets appropriate development standards, and Mr. Rasta already went into the standards. I will say that we met with the Avalon representatives. We made substantial reductions in square footage. And our request is to find the application consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with the area, and would ask you to recommend to the county commission adoption of the applications for the institutional future land use and PD zoning per the land use plan. And I would ask to reserve the balance of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you. That brings us to the public comment period. Do we have any cards? We have a lot of cards.
We have 19 speakers. We'll start with Lisa Schmidt. Lisa Schmidt. And then followed by Cindy Johnson, and then Megan Morris.
Yeah. Can everyone who had their names called go ahead and queue up along the wall so that we can facilitate the timely accommodation of the speakers? Please state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes to make your comments.
My name is Lisa Schmidt. I live at 1915 Watermere Lane, Windermere, Florida, 34786. I'm a parent of two participants of Special Hearts Farm, Jessica and Philip. They're 30 and 33. And we've been, we have been participating since six years now in the program, and we've seen incredible progress to both of my children that have autism. They are becoming way more independent and learning job skill training on a job at the farm, and we absolutely am encouraged for a future placement at the farms, even when we're not here, and have them have a place to call a forever home. I just really, I know that I wrote the letters to you all. I have done everything that we can as parents of a group like this, and we just really encourage your help to get this going and help us meet our goal, help us get this thing going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Thank you. Cynthia Johnson. I live at 4209 Foxtown Drive in Clermont, 34711. Is there another?
No.
Hi. My daughter, Alexa, she's 22 years old. She just aged out recently in April from Lake County School. And we toured numerous places around Orlando, probably 20-mile radius, trying to find a placement for her. It was very discouraging. There are some places available, but not where we felt comfortable that it would be a good placement for her, safety reasons and many others. We are fortunate to have found Special Hearts Farm. She has started there, and we are so happy. Without them, she'd be at home every day with us or with me, and not progressing the way that she should. And I'm hoping, just with the limited time that I've been there, or my daughter's been attending there, I'm really hoping that she can continue and to have a better quality of life than I can give her at home. And I definitely know that she will get that at Special Hearts Farm. So I'm hoping this is considered for my daughter and all the other clients and future clients to the farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Hi, my name is Megan Morris, and I'm at 6138 Payne Stewart Drive, and that's in Windermere. And I just want to talk to you a little bit about my situation. I'm a single mom, and my son is 25 years old. And like a lot of families with special needs kids, we worry about what's going to happen to our kids when we're gone. It's a huge thing to have to worry about if you're going to burden the siblings or where they're going to go. And I've actually spent a lot of time touring other facilities in this state and several other states, just to see what is available. There's, anything that is available has waiting lists that are several years long, and they're overcrowded. There's, it's just very difficult to find. I was actually involved in this original project where this farm would be. We were going to have an equestrian facility for kids with special needs, which we do have something like that in Windermere now. But this need came up, and there is such a dire need for it, for the kids to have a future home, for them to have somewhere to go every day, so we're able to work and have our family life, be able to, and be able to support these kids that they can learn careers, where they can be doing farming or something in the agricultural realm. There's really not much out there for kids after they age out of the system. So this has come about from a need, and we've been very appreciative of Special Hearts Farm, what they've done for my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is going to be Lori Forrester. And Lori has been given time by five people, so when I call your name, I just need to make sure that you are here. Elizabeth. Okay. Kathy Sheeran. Okay. Crystal Seidel. Lisa Combs. And Thad Trogger. All right, so you'll have eight minutes.
Thank you. Lori Forrester, 16050, Sand Hill Road, Winter Garden, Florida, 34787. So many people donated time because we really thought we were going to have one minute. And so now that we have three minutes, I will no doubt give you back some time. But anyway, thank you for hearing us. In today's code, institutional residential care facilities, such as the one proposed, are only permitted in commercial and industrial zoned districts. The applicant seeks to avoid this rule by altering the flume to change this parcel to institutional and change zoning to create a PD to define the use. Although I appreciate Orange County's creativity to try to get this square peg to fit into a round hole, introducing a brand-new land use into a rural settlement should not be their standard operating procedure. There's a point when the county should acquiesce and say this does not fit within the comp plan, and stretching and modifying definitions to make it fit is a slippery slope. The definition of a residential care facility is to accommodate no more than 10 residents. Over that number, it is considered an assisted living facility. The applicant is requesting 30 residents, and therefore this should be categorized more as an assisted living facility, neither which are currently permitted uses within our rural settlement and, as noted in the comp plan. The comp plan policy, FLUM 1.1.4A, is for quasi-public uses, so this isn't appropriate or applicable in this application. One community residential home, not care facility, residential home of six or fewer residents is permitted. However, it requires a 1,200-foot setback from other residential community homes and adjacent residential properties. The original code was created in 1957, and it did not require a similar distance separation standards for residential care facilities. And you might be wondering why. It's because these institutional commercial uses were never intended to be in residential neighborhoods or even more so in rural communities, and is not currently in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement, because it is obviously inappropriate, and it will irrevocably change the character of our rural settlement. Allowing this creative modification of the code to accommodate an inappropriate use will set a dangerous precedent, not only for the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement, but potentially for all rural settlements. And although this type of change shall not be the impetus for future changes, it does, and we all know that. I and others in the community worked in good faith with Kathy and Jennifer, and we were comfortable with one community residential home for up to six unrelated adults, which is allowed under the current land use and zoning, along with their agricultural activities, because that would not have required a flume or zoning change. Unfortunately, it was a red line for her that they were unwilling to consider facilities for anything less than 30 residents. We indicated that whether through a flume change or any other mechanism, that was a red line for us. We made it clear from our very first meeting, thus our attempts to negotiate a compromise were unsuccessful, but please know we tried. We really tried. From their media blitz, they have, they stated they currently have 75 students, which is a 50% increase from what they have submitted in their application, which was 50 students, 20 staff, and 30 full-time residents. As noble as the purpose of Special Hearts Farm is, and as much as we welcome and have told them this since the very first meeting, that we welcome the, all of the agricultural aspects of their project, as well as a community residential home for up to six, to provide a productive and meaningful day for their students. We simply cannot support their desire for a flume and zoning changes that is destructive through our rural settlement and could be used as a lever for future non-compatible uses. There are a lot of us that live in the rural settlement that have special needs, siblings, children, and other family members. I personally, myself, had a special needs sister, and for 35 years, I was her legal guardian, and I took care of her. So I know and appreciate the lady with the blonde hair right here, who said that having them at home is not going to help, you know, improve their, you know, social skills or anything else. And that's why we are okay, and actually are very good, with having them be able to have a productive, meaningful day. But what we cannot have is a change in the future land use and in zoning. There is no compelling reason to put this facility in our rural settlement, as it will open us up for additional requests for commercial and institutional uses. There are other sites in Orange County more suitable for this type of land use and zoning, most notably the 14 acres that they already own in Mount Dora. Whenever there is an application for a flume change, you must conclude that the reason they are asking is because it wasn't compatible with the area to begin with, and their requested use is inconsistent. Right now, that property is rural settlement, one home per five acres for the flume, and that's why they need to have the designation to institutional PD. You are under no obligation to recommend for approval the requested institutional designation. If you agree with nearly all of the Avalon, Lake Avalon residents, that the introduction of an institutional designation into a rural settlement is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan due to its potential incompatible activities, then the requested PD rezoning would automatically be disqualified. Discussions like this need to be made based on tangible facts. This is not about their mission or purpose of their organization. We support that. We support all the agricultural components of this project here. We would support a community residential home of up to six people, but what we cannot support is the fact that they want a flume and zoning change. Because as you all know, once an entitlement is given to a parcel, it's there forever. An objective analysis of the tangible facts of this application yields only one conclusion, that the requested flume and zoning changes are incompatible and inconsistency with the comprehensive plan is inappropriate for the area. I believe they should look at the 14 acres that they currently already own, as that is much more compatible and is not in a rural settlement, but rather in a rural area. I am requesting if, for you all to vote for denial of this application, as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is going to be Maria Casanova Baker, followed by Lady Luz Restrippo.
And those are the final two?
No, we'll have a number after that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Maria Estella Casanova Baker, 16112, Sand Hill Road, Winter Garden, 34787. Our community supports the mission of this organization, too. Several of us who live here have special needs kids, children, siblings, like my husband, who has an older sister. He does care for his sister to this day. She's in her 70s right now. Lost my space. So we clearly understand the need for these adults to have a productive and meaningful day, and we made it abundantly clear to them that we are fine with the agricultural aspects of the project, just like Lori said before me. We also made it abundantly clear to the applicants on numerous occasions that we do not and cannot support the flume and zoning changes they are requesting to accommodate 8,000 square feet of residential care facility in our rural settlement, as it is inconsistent with our... it is inconsistent with our, our development patterns and not permitted use. This settlement is in a, sorry, this commercial institutional use for assisted living is not current, currently in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement. It is inappropriate, and it will, it will forever change our character. There is no compelling reason to put this facility in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement, the most rural of Orange County settlements. They already owned, already been said, fourteen acres in Mount Dora, not in rural settlement, not, not needing to change any flumes in that, in that zone, in that area, where this facility could be built. This will open up to additional requests for commercial and institutional uses in our, in our settlement. We would appreciate your support in helping to preserve our, preserve and protect the integrity and future of the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement, and recommend for denial of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
After Lady Luz Restrepo, it'll be Stephen Schmidt, and then Bobby Beagles.
All right, thank you very much. My name is hard to pronounce. It's Lady Luz Symphorian Restrepo. I live at seventeen seven forty-three Phil C. Peters Road, Winter Garden, Florida. I mean, I think, I, you can't really begin this conversation without giving them credit and recognizing the amazing work that they do, their amazing motivation. I mean, that, that's, that's at the outset. I think in this discussion, however, our natural and good feelings of empathy and sympathy for what the effort is have to be set aside to look at whether this is actually consistent with the character of the community that's there. I purchased my home, my first and only home, about three years ago at the rural settlement, and it was, after almost fifteen years of marriage, a lot of financial sacrifice. And when I made my purchase, it was with the notice and full understanding that I was purchasing, you know, a home in a very beautiful community, community that was a residential rural settlement. The applicants at this, at this hearing, at this point, have an opportunity and are aware of the property that they are purchasing. I do not have the means or the ability, if I become dissatisfied, or if I wanted to have an alternate choice, I don't have that ability to go buy another home in another area. Not saying that the organization would make me do that, but at this point, when you buy your dream lifelong home, it's a full-life commitment. That's as I intended to be. I have three daughters, and, you know, which is part of the reason why I'm here. I, I think some of the issues that I take with, you know, and again, I didn't do a thorough review of the statutes, and I didn't come as prepared as the attorney here did, but just on its face, what you can see is a facility that is going to accommodate thirty overnight residents, a total of fifty students, twenty staff. So right there, you have at least approximately a hundred people who are going to be coming in and coming out of that facility. That's a substantial number. The attorney mentioned that there's a statute that says that there is, I think it, the language is mandatory, it says you shall approve it if it's for six or fewer residents. I'm a little confused, because as I understand the proposal, it's for thirty overnight residents. So I don't quite, I didn't quite catch how that statute applies. Perhaps he'll call, he'll clarify in his rebuttal. But, so, you know, as I understand it too, at the outset, they're already having to ask for a waiver of parking. They're seeking an extended parking area, as I understand it. And so, again, it is an amazing, an amazing good thing, I mean, to, to, to advocate for the least of it. We, we can all agree on that. However, what this will actually entail, the, the dynamics and the day-in and day-out, it's just not consistent with the character of, of the organization, of the community as it stands now. And so, I think one thing that is, for me, it kind of makes me take a pause, is I don't know if there has been an effort to find an alternate source, an alternate land, and that's concerning to me. I think that would, seems to be a possibility that needs to be further explored. My time's up. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
So we have Stephen Schmidt, and then, and then, well, Bobby Beagles, if you want to go first. Bobby Beagles, and then Stephen Schmidt. Okay, so Bobby, you'll have four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Bobby Beagles, live at 21302 Fort Christmas Road, Christmas, Florida. I am here representing as a board member of Special Heart Farms and no other ag organizations. And the reason I say that, I have been tied to ag organizations in this county for over forty years. I have sat in these chambers for over forty years, and I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding that I'm here for Special Heart Farms and nobody else. I started eight years ago with a check I had to deliver to Dr. Phillips High School. That little blond-headed lady sitting right there, I gave that check to. At the same time, a little blonde girl about that high, fully grown, walked up to me and said, "Would you like to see my animal?" I couldn't say no. I went out, along with her, and looked at the animal. I was not happy. We could do better. I quit being the executive director of an ag organization to go to these people to help the kids. We have got the funding to do what we need to do with. With your help, we can move to the next level. Let me say to y'all, my niece was stuck in a wheelchair from the time she was born, her sister was born dead, until she died at twelve years old. The only thing it would make her happy was a bunny rabbit. She would scream at the top of her lungs. She could not help herself. We changed her diapers regularly. Until you have lived it, it's something you really need to look at. And let me say to y'all, this is a project, it's not only for schoolkids, but once the parents pass away, a special-needs child will have a place to go. Now they don't. They can go to school from six years old to sixteen. Once they hit the sixteen, they cut them out. They have no place to go. A parent's have enough of trouble trying to make ends meet. Either they find a place that they can let their kids go and have a day, or if they pass away, if the living quarters is available, they will have a place to live. This is why I'm standing here. I've been a resident of Orange County since nineteen forty-two. That's when I was born. I've lived on the west side. Y'all run me out of there with Martin Marietta and East West Expressway. We bought a ranch in Christmas, and I'm darned if y'all run me out of there. Guys, ladies, we need your support to move forward. It's not for us, it's for those that cannot help their self. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is going to be Richard Geller, followed by Kurt Vale.
I'm Kurt Volle, 388 Douglas Edward Drive in Ocoee, Florida. I just wanted to mention to everybody, so everybody knows, they talk about these thirty people and how much trouble that's going to cause. None of them drive. None of them have cars. So there's not, there's, those current thirty cars, thirty people aren't going to be going in and out and onto the road. They're very quiet. Most of them don't like noise, and I think they'd be very good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is going to be Mark Mansfield, followed by Pam Capers.
Name is Mark Mansfield, 16362 Sand Hill Road, Winter Garden, Florida. I'm here today to speak against approval of land use plan and zoning change for this project. The Lake Avalon Rural Settlement was authorized by the county twenty years ago. The predominant zoning of A1 for future land development was set at a minimum of one dwelling unit per five acres and has not been changed since then. Also, the current land use plan, the flume, shows a similar development density. What this plan proposes is a very high-density development, which is totally out of character for the rural settlement. This project is also near the center of the rural settlement. If the land usage for this property is changed institutional, this will open the door to other developers to make the same change to the properties they want to develop, and this will lead to the degradation and eventual destruction of not only this rural settlement, but possibly all rural settlements here in Orange County. Also, there are no county utilities available for water or waste treatment. The project would require septic tanks and wells to accommodate the fifty students, twenty staff, and thirty full-time residents. The load requirements for this many people are way beyond the limits allowed by the current zoning and flume. In, in closing, please honor the agreements between Lake Avalon Rural Settlement in Orange County and the flume and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Pam Capers, followed by Robert Yarborough, and then Fred Pryor.
My name is Pam Capers, 5401 Rex Drive. I live inside the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement. I've lived there for approximately twenty years. For the first ten or fifteen years or so, I didn't pay any attention to what was going on in this building. It was only recently that I started coming to these meetings, coming to the county commission meetings, writing emails, reading all the community notices that came out about requests for changes inside of our rural settlement. I've learned a lot in the last five years. I've spoken in several of these meetings now, and the, the thread is always the same. We have cheap land in our rural settlement because it is zoned rural agricultural. If it were zoned commercial or institutional, it'd cost a lot more. So people come in and they see inexpensive land. They see the beautiful undeveloped areas in our rural settlement, and they think, "I could live here. I could build something here." And then they want to come and make changes so that they can build what they want to build. And I don't fault them for that. Everyone has a right to ask. Everyone has a right to try and build what they want to build. But I'm sure you guys are getting tired of hearing the same arguments every time we come here. It will erode the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement to allow future land use changes and zoning changes within the boundaries. If you don't believe me, talk to the people that live in the Gotha Rural Settlement, or the West Windermere Rural Settlement. Talk to the people out at Lake Pickett, because all of those people are also experiencing the results of incompatible and inconsistent land use changes. I feel for these people. I think that they have a wonderful mission, and I wish that we could have worked out a compromise that allowed them to get the things that we wanted, they wanted, while keeping the integrity of our rural settlement. But we couldn't, and now it's up to you. Please, I request that you recommend denial of this application based on incompatibility with the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
First of all, thank you. My name is Robert Keith Yarborough. I live at 4441 Avalon Road in Winter Garden, Florida. Property just almost adjacent to the applicant's property. I just guess, first of all, this is not about not caring. It can so easily come across that way. I've got a twenty, early twenties grandson that we just placed in a rural residential facility ourselves, got a niece that's on the spectrum that has special needs. I could go on and on, all right? So it's not about caring at all. In fact, a young man that is the program director for Lift Disability Network in the West Orange and South Lake County, I mentored him as a teenager, all right? And over the many years, continue to support his direction in serving in our community as well as overseas. And so, just have to take my word for it, because you don't know me, but I love the ministry. I love the, what the folks are doing, what their desire is. It's truly about the integrity of the rural settlement. One of the things that I noticed through all the PowerPoint presentations earlier, as I was, and I'm, and I'm no expert in this, I don't know anything except what I've had to learn, as was stated earlier, but I didn't see rural settlement actually in any of those statutes. I saw rural services area. And then I had to ask, is there a difference between rural services area and rural settlement? There's a world of difference, apparently. There's so many more protections and things that have to take place in a rural settlement versus rural services area. And apparently, there are spaces in Orange County that meet the requirements that they need in rural services area without having to redesignate or change the designation for what? I've lived out there forty years. My wife literally was born in Winter Garden and has lived on the property since fifty-six. Her parents bought the property in forty-nine. And so, it's not about me coming in and wanting to do something different. We've had to deal with this on and on. And you're kind of like the only stopgap in the whole process, to keep it from becoming Hamlin as a development, which is just on the other side. I've had people come and want to purchase the property, developers, and I love what, I mean, I'm not against them developing at all, but they're pushing, they push right up to the edge. And again, because the land, if it's stated, is cheaper comparatively, not cheap, but cheaper comparatively. So please, help us maintain the integrity of our rural settlement. And where many of us have lived a long time, and some are new to it, but, but they came there for that very thing. And there's not much left in Orange County that meets that criteria at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Fred Pryor, followed by Jennifer Elliott, and then Julie Travolone.
Hi there. Fred Pryor, 2630 Elizabeth Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32804. I'm going to apologize, I do not like public speaking, but my brother is a member of Special Hearts Farm. He's been there for a few years now. He's about to turn thirty this year, and the last ten or so years since he's aged out of the public school system, my family and I and all of our friends who are in this community have been trying to find a place for them to live their adult lives and with purpose, and have a true place for them to have integrity as well in their lives. So this is, and has been since we started, been the most promising opportunity, and you should see how my brother just lights up working there every day. And without this place, I just shudder to think of what he would have. We, you know, we're there to take care of him, my wife and I, and obviously my mom and my rest of my family, but he really does need this, just like any adult would. They need a sense of purpose, and they really get a sense of community from it. And I can tell you, this is not the first time I've been here for a hearing on our Mount Dora property. We got turned away for that. I still work on that property. I wake up at dawn, once a month at least, working on there, driving tractors. I change diapers for my little brother. This is not even the first organization we've been a part of. So when I tell you that this is truly something that we need, that there is a need for this, and there is a need for these adults, just believe me, and that's why we're here today. I can't speak on statutes or anything like that. I can just tell you that as I get older and my brother gets older, I know that he needs, he needs extra care. My mom can't do it all alone. We are there for him, but this place truly has given us an opportunity for that, and we have this, you know, this opportunity with the funding that we've gotten and all that, that it really is, I mean, all they've told us is that this is a chance that is only one time, and that we will have it. And we were here two years ago on them Mount Dora property, meeting about that. That was turned away, and we had similar things about the integrity of his business and from our neighbors and all that stuff. So I can tell you, we have done our due diligence with other organizations, other communities, other properties, and this is by far our best chance. And I shudder to think, if we get turned away now, what else we would have, because I just, it's been ten years of this where we've been trying to find it, and I just, I just can't tell you how much of a need there really is. tell you how much of a need there really is. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Elliott. I live at 8413 Sunset Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32819, District 1. I just wanted to start by clarifying a few things and remind, I guess, the P and Z that over the last two years, we have complied with every request to move our project forward. There's been changes, there's been further requests by the county to do things, and we've complied with everything. And also clarify, we were never turned down for our 14-acre property in Mount Dora. We withdrew the application at the request of the commissioners to find a better location in a rural area for our farm. That seems to be forgotten a lot of times. We still own that property, but we were asked to change another site that was more suitable, suitable for our farmers, so they could live in their own community. I think a lot of people seem to forget that a lot of our farmers live in District 1. This is their community. We have residents from the Avalon community that come to our farm, and they have spoken at their community meeting. That's a few of my points, sorry about that. So we want to keep our farmers in their community. We have also done, the bottom line is we're a farm. Our farmers are entitled to live on their farm, just like every other farmer, they should be allowed to live at their farm. We need more than six residents because we will have more than six people working at the farm. So I think that's important to note as well. I also want to state, as everybody saw me bring the box up there, there is 1,162 letters in there, and as of about two hours ago, we are up to 1,174 letters of support throughout Orange County and throughout the state of Florida. People know about our project. People come to us every day, "Oh, my gosh, you guys are so wonderful. Florida, Orange County, look what you're doing for the disabled community." And I think that's important to stress as well. Orange County can be a shining light. The Avalon community can be a shining light. This is what the special needs community needs. Just to clarify real quick, because my time is going down, we've attended community meetings and we've worked with the Avalon community as much as we can. We've reduced all of the sizes of our buildings to accommodate their requests. And I understand that the Avalon community says that they're not against special needs, but what I continue to hear is, "We love your project, just not in our neighborhood." It was once suggested at the community meeting that we should go by the Walmart. So with that said, our residents should be able to stay in the community that they grow up, the grow up, that they work and farm in, because we are a farm.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Julie, and then Mike Walsh.
Hi, I'm Julie Trevillion, and I live at 940 Tildenville School Road in Winter Garden, 34787. My son Chase has Down Syndrome, and he is 26 years old, and he's been going to the farm for about four years now. And I think, as I listen to other people talking about, you know, "Oh, we have a sister that my husband, you know, takes care of her, she's special needs," that we can all look and say that the family should take care of the family member that has special needs, but, you know, we work, you know, we have babies, we have grandchildren, we have, you know, it's very difficult to devote 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to caring for a family member. And that's why a facility like this is just like so needed to be able to give them a routine, to have, you know, a job, to have friends around, to have workers that care about them, that assist. But you can't assume a family member is going to be taking care of the special needs person all the time and giving them, you know, all the requirements that they have. You know, they may be taking care of them, but it's just giving them a room to live in. It's not giving them activities. It's not giving them interaction. It's just allowing them to exist until they're done existing. And so I just, I feel like Special Hearts Farm is trying to provide a meaningful existence for, you know, all of their students, you know, people that are there. So I don't, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mike Walsh, he's being given time by Ron Brenham. Okay, you'll have four minutes.
Thanks, and that was actually based on the idea that we thought we'd only have a minute, so I'll be able to talk slower. My name is Michael Walsh. I live at 16065 Sand Hill Road, Winter Garden, Florida, and I'm a homeowner in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement with my wife, who can't be here today as she is the sole caretaker of her elderly mom and our residents, so we identify with a 24-hour care relationship. She's also a diabetic, so her monitor is going off at all times during the night. Most of our residents have jobs that keep them from attending daytime meetings. Low numbers here from the settlement do not suggest or confirm an acceptance or agreement with this application. And I know this has been said and it seems disingenuous, but we honestly believe that Special Hearts does some amazing work and believe their mission, they believe in their mission with their whole heart. But we do have a knowledge problem here in terms of what a rural settlement is, and we have to really admit that this could lead to the eventual destruction, weakening and destruction of 21 rural settlements. My 40-plus-year career as a wildlife veterinarian is advocacy to the core. I have fought through that career for improvements in how we treat wildlife, animals in zoos and aquariums, and I'm well-known for doing that. But I cannot and will not compromise one animal, one group, or one person in trying to take something from one and give it to another. Community is basically a group of people living in the same place and having a particular characteristic and common fellowship with shared common attitudes, interests, and goals. Situational advocacy is an act or approach supporting a cause or proposal that ignores the negative effects on the greater good. Ethics, as we know, are more principles that govern a person or group behavior. After years of the local residents in our area advocating for preserving some of rural Florida, finally in 2004, the Orange County Board of County Commissioners declared us a rural settlement. And now, just recently, on July 4th, 2024, the Orange County Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved an ordinance to officially recognize Lake Avalon Rural Preservation District. Again, that emphasis on keeping those things in place. That does not mean that if someone comes in, it's our fault that we can't offer them the things that they might want. The real only applicable components in this hearing are, one applicant, concepts of rural settlements and exceptions, the citizens of rural settlements, and Orange County government. This strategy for an exception is really based on not looking into all the options and not seeking the compromise necessary to be able to come into a rural settlement. This application also ballooned something that's dear to a lot of our hearts. We've moved there and had to accept septic tanks. I do research on contaminants, PFOS, PFAS, anything you can imagine that's amazing that gets into the animals I take care of. But the real problem with this is that this effectively does put a stake into the hearts of the 21 settlements and thousands of Orange County citizens who are the only ones entitled to accept these changes through what should be a democratic process of majority voting in the settlements. Denial is really the only just fair choice to move to the compromise offered and to the options that are truly out there and available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Rose Anna Malherby. And then lastly, after Rose will be Ryan Altheus.
My name is Rose Anna Malherby, and I live at 4302 Rex Drive in Winter Garden, Florida, 34787, in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement. I am, I have no objection to Special Hearts establishing their agricultural campus in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement. However, I am strongly opposed to the request for a future land use and zoning change to accommodate assisted living facilities. I am concerned about why the applicant doesn't consider placing their live-in care facility elsewhere, like on the 14 acres they already own and transport the members in similarly to a field trip each day. This approach would provide the members with a more realistic work-home-life experience rather than locking them up 24/7. Please deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Ryan Altheus. Okay, so Ryan's not here. And then we have Cheryl Good.
My name is Cheryl Good. I live at 17765 Philcy Peters Road. I'm the adoptive mother of two special needs kids, two great boys that are now in their 30s. My son John now lives in a group home and goes to a center every day where he gets job training and different things. They left school when they were 22, so I do know that there are programs around because I've used them. John's lived in several different facilities, and I know for a fact that these are busy facilities. His doctor comes, the podiatrist comes, his therapist, the caregivers and the managers of the place. There's, it's a very busy place. Anyway, so, and I know one thing, government funding, the laws, these things change every year. So I've had to move John sometimes because some of these places don't make it. So I have a concern of if this place doesn't make it, or if they decide to go somewhere else, then what happens? That you've changed the zoning and you can't change it back at that point. Let me see. I know this type of facility pulls at the heartstrings. It pulls at my heartstrings, being, you know, a mother of two special needs kids. But it would be the first step in dismantling our community. It's a domino effect. If they are able to get this changed, then it, someone else can come along and then say, "You did it for them, now we want to do this." So I know that rural settlements all over Orange County are suffering from that, and I don't want to see that happen to us. I do want to say about the petitions that they brought over here, I probably would have signed that petition had it been presented to me the way it was presented online, because I have a heart for that as well. But that petition was just asking to support their ministry. It did not support changing our rural settlement zoning laws. So we worked hard to create our rural settlement, very hard, 20 years ago, and I just think, please don't destroy, and I'm going to address this to you guys and also to you guys, don't destroy our dream so that you can have your dream. I understand that, but that's not fair for us to have to lose our dreams so that they can have theirs. Thank you all very much, and I do ask that you recommend for denial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Completes my list.
Is there anyone here that did not sign a speaker card that would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public comment period. Okay, so, okay, so Rick had asked for some time for rebuttal. I think he had five minutes and two seconds left.
Five minutes, seven seconds left. I just need to, I have a couple rebuttal slides, and then I'm going to go through and address This is not an assisted living facility. These are community residential homes, specifically defined by the Florida statutes, and it states, again, a CRH that serves six or fewer residents, which is exactly what we have here, shall be permitted in any residential or rural agricultural future land use designation or zoning district. The whole notion that Special Hearts Farm can open the door to other uses that are institutional or commercial or this whole parade of horribles that you heard from the opponents is completely false. It is misleading. And here is from the staff report. FLUM 6.1.4 states institutional uses shall not be an impetus for additional urban development in the rural service area. Rural settlements are in the rural service area. No one can say, "Look, you gave them institutional use, so let us have our commercial use or our institutional use." Such an appeal would be unlawful under our comprehensive plan. All right. Oh, there was a statement about the parking waiver. That's a good thing, so you have less pervious space. There was a comment about the septic. We are going to have the highest-rated advanced septic system that there is that has ever been created here. Huge amounts of nitrogen removal. In fact, this is being implemented by Wakava Springs, right? And this whole notion that you cannot have institutional uses in a rural settlement is poppycock. It is nonsense. There are institutional uses, existing institutional uses in rural settlements, and we all know that. This whole notion, the statement that we ought to have our facility only in a commercial or industrial zone districts is insulting, insulting to all the people who use Special Hearts Farm. You know from all those photographs I showed that we need a rural zoned area, a rural place for this program. You all saw that. The property in Mount Dora would have been subject to chemical spraying for all the strawberries right abutting the property, would have been subject to bird cannons, and you heard the statement that many of these special needs young adults do not like noise. And so it made sense, when this property became available, to pivot to it, to pivot to it, and to give it a go. And it's just remarkable that as we've been sitting here, that the numbers of signatures on the petitions continues to rise, and the petition speaks for itself and specifically indicates support for the zoning change that is requested by Special Hearts Farm. Those residences, the 30 residences in six, in five group homes, six per community home, cannot even be seen. This whole notion that this is going to destroy the rural settlement is nonsense, pure nonsense. There was a misstatement about when OCPS cuts off students at age 22. I think, I think there was a misstatement somewhere along the line that was 16 or some number, 22 is the number. There was a reference to this as high-density development. This is 18 acres, more than 18 acres. This is, that's just, you know what high-density development is, and you know darn well, this is not high-density development. The one thing that I've been listening for this whole time, and maybe some of you have too, is where is there precedent? Any precedent, anywhere, anytime, that where institutional use has led to some other commercial or some other use that is unwanted? And the opponents of this project did not come up with one example where an institutional use led to other undesirable uses. Bottom line is that this is a no-brainer. You all ought to support it wholeheartedly. This is one of those projects that you could look yourself in the mirror at the end of the day, and though you did something really, really good by supporting with your recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners of both the future land use and the zoning, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I need to let you know that I had ex parte communication with two of the attorneys representing Special Hearts Farm, and when you allow me, I also have some questions for staff.
Well, you're first on the list, so have at it.
All right, here's one question. Under the Orange County Code, if you have a dwelling, are you allowed to have an accessory dwelling use on the property, like a guest house? And if so, does that count as a dwelling unit?
Accessory dwelling units do not count as a unit for purposes of density.
Okay. Would they count as a... Okay. Would they count as a facility for having a residential facility for, it could be any age, I guess, for like a residential care facility? I know under state law, you're allowed to have six or less, and state law overrides local law with regard to that. Would you be allowed to have six in an accessory dwelling?
No. Accessory dwelling, there's a lot of criteria that are attached to it, but a community residential home could not be an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. With regard to, what's the definition of institutional? Is that like a huge list of things?
There's no, I have to look up in our conference plan what the exact definition is.
It is a long list, but it includes schools, hospitals, and other similar facilities. So a rec center would also be an institutional use.
Includes public and private utilities, facilities, structures, and lands that serve a public or quasi-public purpose. Public schools that may have been designated institutional may continue to maintain that designation. So that's the...
And then another question is, as Mr. Geller brought up, that approving this does not automatically allow other institutional uses in a rural settlement? Based on the, I forget what land use designation that Mr. Geller mentioned, but there was one policy that seemed to indicate that. Is that accurate?
So any case that comes before this commission has to stand on its own in terms of compatibility and consistency with the conference of plan. And you base that based on what's out there. So if this gets built and a property comes in next to it, then this would be considered as part of the compatibility measure for whatever else comes next to it.
Right.
Does it mean that there's going to be a proliferation of institutional uses like this? I can't...
So it would have to meet the compatibility standard, right?
It's such a unique use that, you know, we're not going to have a...
Right. The previous request for Special Hearts Farm was not in Mount Dora. It was in Tangerine, right adjacent to the Tangerine Rural Settlement. The Tangerine Rural Settlement is where I live. I've been the president of that organization or the Tangerine Improvement Society for many years and still am an officer. We welcomed that development, right adjacent to the Tangerine Rural Settlement. We thought it was a great service to our community and to our citizens and to our families that have special needs. And to say that it shouldn't be allowed in a rural settlement is, you know, it's embarrassing to think that you would not allow something like this in your community. I would think you would welcome it with welcome arms. So I just wanted to point out some of this information, that property. And the reason presented why they didn't stay there was because of the potential harm to the residents due to the fact that it's surrounded by a blueberry farm that has chemicals that they spray regularly and could have been harmful to their students. But at any rate, I would like to go on record as being in favor of this request and feel that it would not be detrimental to the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement. I think I'm very protective of rural settlements. I know there's 21. Tangerine is one of the oldest. Christmas is one of the oldest. Mr. Beagles is living out there and very familiar with the protections. We have been very protective of our rural settlements and would continue to be, even if this is approved. So, thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and a comment. When I was looking at the broader map of this, not what we showed, just pulling up my phone, there's a property to the southeast, and I don't know if it's the same one that's marked industrial, but my question for staff is, it sort of straddles the 429 on either side. It looks like, maybe is that water treatment that's in there, that area?
Yeah, that's Conserve 2. It's a part of the water treatment system, and it's the rapid infiltration basins that they send the treated water back into our aquifer.
Thank you. My other question, I guess for the applicant, how big is the existing barn on the site right now, just square footage-wise? Just roughly, I was just curious.
Sorry, it's 14,000? Already permitted, it's approximately 11,000 square feet. Please don't hold that to me, but it holds 20 horses, is that correct? 20, 20 full-size horses.
That's actually what I was asking. You know, usually you have somewhere between 200 and 300 square foot horse. I was wondering if it was somewhere between like 20, 30, 40 type of horses. So thank you for asking. That's my next question. And then my other question, I'm sorry for the applicant, was just overall, the entire capital project, I'm curious, how much does the whole project cost in general? And you mentioned they received state funding, and somebody had mentioned that they were close to being to their fundraising goal, and I was curious how much needs to be raised to finish the project?
If you'll allow me to answer that.
Yes. What we received from the state was 5.3 million, and like, the horse barn is already there. So the other two buildings, the adult day training facility and the event training center barn, those will definitely be able to be built with that capital money that we have already. And then the housing, like we've shared with Avalon, that will come as we afford to build those homes. You're not going to see six homes there in year one. That's not what we've told them. As we build the homes, the cottages, maybe one per year will be built. That will be dependent on the funding. We have no doubt that we will have the money to achieve this project. We have a lot of state funding. It has been fully supported by the state, the governor, the Florida Farm Bureau. We've been told we can come back and ask for more money to finish the project.
Sure. So my other question, just trying to understand the sort of context, because I was not familiar with Special Hearts Farm prior to getting the packet and receiving the information, and I work in the nonprofit sector, so I'm just sorry, I'm not unfamiliar. What is your annual operating budget right now?
Well, it just ranges. Last year, our budget, we brought in over a million dollars. So, you know, it just depends. We are a non-for-profit, so it just depends on fundraising, how things go every year. But we're very soluble. We have a lot of...
The reason for my question was because you're going into what looks to be a larger facility, and just wondered what kind of capacity the organization has to operate if you're at a million-dollar budget now. What do you anticipate it's going to be in the future?
We have budgeted what we feel is adequate to support the needs of what's going to be there. If we did not do that, we wouldn't have ever started down this road. So we've only been a non-for-profit for five years, so we're very young.
Sure. All right. That was my question. I just want to make a couple of comments, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, or I can come back after everybody's questions, whichever you prefer.
No, go ahead.
I hear the message that the Avalon Rural Settlement residents are not uncaring. I hear that loud and clear. And in fact, you know, the message coming across is that they're very caring, not only of people, but also animals in the environment. So I just want to make sure that the residents that have come and spoken today know that that message has been heard, at least by me. And to the Special Hearts Farm parents and supporters, we're not up here today going to be deciding whether or not to shut you down. That's not the role of the organization today. The vote today, I know, is extremely significant because you've been planning for this and working on it for a very long time. But a lot of the message was, if we don't do this, you know, the organization suffers to the extreme. And I don't know that that message was necessarily, I'll just leave it at that. The other thing I want to say is, I do also know that 13% of Americans struggle with the disability, and 2.2% of Americans struggle with autism, and Florida is the state with the highest per capita rate of autism in the country, 329,000, you know, adults and children with autism. It's a big deal everywhere. It's a particularly big deal in Florida. We have the highest rate out of all 50 states. But what I didn't hear from the Special Hearts Farm families was the same level of empathy from the speakers going in both directions. So the speakers from the rural settlement had a great deal of empathy about the mission and vision of what Special Hearts Farm was trying to do. I didn't really hear anything in reverse about what you're asking of the people of the rural settlement to do as well. And I just want to encourage you to think about that in the future. I think the Special Hearts Farm project, in the end, probably, actually, and this will sound incredible to the folks in the rural settlement, it actually probably adds value to the rural settlement over time, as opposed to the opposite that I know you're concerned about. And I'm very torn on this particular one, because I hear both sides of the argument. But what I typically would defer to is the staff recommendation on something like this, because they've been working on this far longer and harder than anything else that we have here. But I do appreciate all of the recommendations. And I just would say that to the folks from the rural settlement, and please take this in the spirit which it's given, there were 20 or 30 horses that were living there overnight for a long period of time as well. And, well, it's a horse farm, and it had 20 or 30 space for them. So, you know, I think that, you know, one of the comments I heard earlier is that these are people going to be locked in 24/7, and that's just not the way that this works either. And so I think there, one way or another, these groups may have to live together in some type of harmony over time. And I think if they do, and if this passes, it may not, that that type of empathy going in both directions is probably going to be pretty important for the survival of both the settlement and for the Special Hearts Farm project. So I'm not sure how this is going to go, and frankly, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on it. But we'll see, you know, from the comments that are made today.
Thank you. Mr. Boers.
So I'm extremely supportive of Special Hearts' mission. I do sympathize. I do understand your needs. But I do want to just represent my community of Gotha, and I do want to answer Mr. Geller's question. So 1990, right, we had a very rural settlement, looked just like Avalon and Gotha, believe it or not, and we got Gotha Middle School, which we all opposed, right? That was the very first PD to ever enter into our rural settlement. All right, let's go to 1998, 2000. We had our first PD then that we all fought that got approved, because they used Gotha Middle as the reason why they should be justified as their PD. Let's just fast forward to the 2000s. We had Fire Creek come, which then basically, between just those areas, took up a vast majority of our rural settlement as now PD, right? So we had a loss. A lot of people leave, and guess where they moved? Avalon, right? So a lot of Gotha people now live in Avalon because of what happened in Gotha. I do sincerely empathize of, it may not be in the code book, it may not be the land development code, but it happens. It completely happens. And the difference is Avalon has big developers surrounding it, and they will use this, I will tell you. I'm just going to put it out there. They will use this as a reason to try to get their land and then go after Orange County and turn around. And if it gets disapproved because it's not compatible, they will sue. And I know, because I've seen the talk, I've seen the talk on social media from developers, I think Orange County could do a much more creative job in finding a way to make this happen without changing the future land use. I really do. I wish you could find a way to make this a special exception, because we have Crenshaw Academy right down the street from us. That is an institutional school under a special exception, under A1 zoning. They also just applied for a special exception for, and it got denied because the residents just, we weren't having it because of flooding issues in that particular area. But they were going to have a 40-student boarding school, boarding school overnight, more than what they're asking for here. And that went special exception. So I'm having a hard time understanding, why does it have to be special exception? Crenshaw Academy, Jason, I think I had it up. I can tell you the case number if I still have it up. But that came a couple of years ago. If you look up Crenshaw, that was a special exception. And they were adding another, they're adding dormitory units, 24-hour care, you know. I know that they say adults, but it would be a win-win for both sides here if we could somehow get this where we're not going to change a future land use completely. I mean, that land use will be there forever. What makes it, I mean, you say that it shouldn't. You say that it should be illegal or against the law to use this as a stepping stone to change more future land uses. But I will tell you, it will happen. It will 100% happen. I've seen it. That is the example, you know. But if we could just somehow have a, I mean, isn't it up to the chief zoning official to, for a special exception? He kind of portrays those rules. I'm just trying to understand why future land use change, why not a special exception in a rural, in my opinion, all rural development should be under a special exception.
So to answer that question, there has been in-depth conversations with the zoning division. And in looking at what the applicant's request was, it is the training facility component of it, as determined by the zoning manager, requires either a commercial, industrial, or institutional future land use. So it's the training facility portion of the request.
Or the activity center portion of the request, correct? I mean, we're not taking textbooks out, and we're not doing training like in a traditional training setting. They're learning farming. They're learning skills that could help them be employed. But they're not, they're not, they're not learning, you know, I mean, you understand what I'm saying. I mean, there's a true training facility, and then there's care to people that really need this because they can't care for themselves. And I'm 100%. My aunt does exactly this, like exactly this. And I had a very long talk. Her difference is she's never put all the homes next to each other. She thinks that this is the most creative, unbelievable idea, fully in support of it, like she loves it. And, you know, she has homes set out all throughout the community. But six residents, exact same thing. And she has such a big heart for it. And I truly feel for, you know, what you're doing is an amazing thing. And you're right, it's a benefit to the community, it's a benefit to Avalon, but it's a dis-benefit to Avalon to change the future land use. And that's the biggest thing here. Do you think we'd have all these people giving up their time today if it was a special exception? Like, of course not. Especially, you look across any rural community, any commercially used property or any property, like that's all under a special exception. And it's, the zoning, I believe, I'm pretty sure I'm right, the zoning manager is the one that just can say, "Yes, special exception." Like, he doesn't, it doesn't, there's not, is it really that black and white? Because I always saw that special exception is very gray.
So in our use table, and with the proposed uses, the zoning manager has determined that the training facility portion of the request requires a commercial, industrial, or institutional future land use.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's there. How did Crenshaw get that? I mean, technically, they're doing training, right?
I don't, I'm not aware of the intricacies of the differences, so we'd have to research that.
Yeah, I mean, you have 24-hour care, right? 24-hour care, and you're training, right? Like, to be, I mean, you're training a student, you know, or you're training farming. But if we could somehow do that, I think this could be a win-win for everybody, you know? They don't have to worry about PDs coming in like Fire Creek and Braemar and stuff like that. I mean, they're so encroached with developers, it's unbelievable. And they're all just waiting. And that's where we were at in the 1990s. And then they just went right through, and our rural charm is lost, you know? I mean, Bobby, I know out on the east side, you guys fight this stuff all the time, you know? And I, you know, I'm sure that Christmas's community would accept a special exception. I know that Tangerine would accept a special exception. But if they're going to change a future land use that's permanent within it, that would give a developer a reason to make it hard for the county to deny them. I mean, it happens. I mean, they will appeal, and they will go after, and they will use this as an example one day. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez.
Well, we commissioners don't have to yield time to one another, but if I could, I'd yield more time to you. That was both impassioned and accurate, in my view, and I'll get to that in a second. I have, I've been on this body, I think, about six years or so. And in those years, I've never shared anything personal about my history in Orange County, but I want to today. My family started moving here in the 70s, opened a small family restaurant in Soto, what is now called Soto. Back then, it wasn't. And I had the pleasure to move into an Arabian horse farm just north of the Osceola line. And growing up on a horse farm with dozens of chickens and a cow or two, you know, that was idyllic and amazing. And I absolutely loved it, and I wouldn't change a thing. Well, the government took that. Well, the government took that eminent domain in 1990 or so to build the 417. So that was, that was for me a transformative moment as a kid. We got the shekels, of course, for the land. But I say all that to say that I share a passion with, actually, I think, everybody in the audience, which is for a rural lifestyle. My family, my wife and I live in Soto nowadays, of all places, but it's a lifestyle I understand and that I love and that I miss and that, in many ways, the government took. So, all of that said, I had some notes here on my computer that I wanted to hit, and let me see. So first of all, to the gentleman in the back who said he wasn't good at public speaking, I thought you did a wonderful job. So congratulations on that. Mr. Beagles, thank you for always. I've seen you many, many times over the years. Thank you for always being up here and standing up for your community. I wanted to talk about Dantoreen. You know, that was a really interesting one for me. I don't think I've ever had public comments, or I've made comments, where I was actually giving a cautionary tale to an applicant on a be careful what you wish for, I'm not sure you want this change. I don't think you want this to be allowed. And that was discussed today. And I, that's really how I felt about Dantoreen. Want to say that while you were speaking, David, I saw a, I saw a lot of nods from both sides of the aisle, so to speak, in the audience. So, to my substantive comments, I had typed this out before, before actually you spoke. So this is kind of like Jeopardy where my answer was already written. I wanted to analogize this to a multiple choice test where the answer is none of the above. I feel, I feel very strongly that this is an incredible organization, and I also feel equally strongly that it belongs right where they're proposing. I think this is the perfect place. It just seems to me that this is an inappropriate use of the land use code. It seems to me that this is compatible. It seems to me that it is a consistent use. I'm good with this. It feels that we are applying a designation that creates risk to the rural settlement and furthermore, I would argue, I would submit, creates future risk to the applicant itself. Because that is, that's, this is not quite institutional, is it? In my mind. But it is, in my opinion as well, and I put myself, now fast forward a few decades, put myself as an adult living in that farm I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, that ranch, and I think to myself, how would I feel about this being my neighbor? And I say to myself, I would love this. This is great, right? This is, this is horses and cows and chickens and whatnot, and this is people who really, really need to be here and also families who need them to be there. So it's win, 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 right? And it's protecting the rural character and everything else in the settlement. So I'm in favor of this project. I don't feel in favor of the change, of the designation, at least as it's presented, which I think is, your point, Commissioner?
That is my, my point. I think that if there's a way to preserve the agriculture, the rural state, a way to preserve that without doing a future land use designation, we're doing a service, I'm doing a service for my constituents, and I'm doing a service for Special Hearts. It's just, there has to be a better middle ground because I, I've just, I see it, I lived it, and, you know, you don't want me living in a normal neighborhood. I need space, trust me. That's why these people are there. They need that same type of lifestyle. It is truly a lifestyle, something I will always be a part of. But the second one thing changes, everybody rushes there. It's like a gold rush for developers. Now, these developers, they're not part of our community, but they sure like to profit off of it. So they'll change it without caring about the community. And that's not what Special Hearts is doing, but it's what's going to come after Special Hearts. And when the community goes and speaks and maybe can swing the commissioner's vote on some other PD that's going to come, that developer will look to this one right here and appeal it, maybe go up as high as the state, maybe end up, you know, doing a lawsuit for unfair justice. And I mean, I'm sure you've seen something like that with Orange County. There's a developer that sees something that's already happened, they go and do it, they get disapproved, they sue, and it becomes a headache for Orange County. Guess what? We're paying for it as a tax, the tax burden. So that's, that's my strongest, you know, feeling about this. And I just know, I mean, there's not going to be any textbook examples except the proof of what happened where I live. And it all started with an institution, Gotha Middle School. And that's, and it's, and it's still, to this day, we are still trying to fight stuff coming in.
I agree. And to finish my comments, I'd be remiss if I didn't do two things. And first of all, I thank the residents who are representing the settlement. Thank you for being here and thank you for speaking up and protecting what you have and also commending all of you. Really amazing, really, really amazing what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arrington.
Thank you, Chair. I think I just wanted to give some comments to this project. I definitely want to thank all of the residents that took their time to come out here and to voice their concerns. Trust me, they haven't fallen on deaf ears, and I understand the concern at hand. I also wanted to commend Special Hearts as well because, I mean, this is such a wonderful project. I also feel that this is a benefit to the community like some of my other commissioners mentioned, and it's very unique, you know? It's basically a farm. And I think one of the, I think the applicant mentioned that, it's a farm and, you know, some of the outsources that it could also provide the community such as the farmer's market and, you know, other benefits that I see with this. You know, if there was a way, you know, that, you know, I love this, the special exceptions option, you know, to help protect, you know, any future development of institutional or similar-like projects, I would definitely like to see that if possible. I don't know if the board, if the board itself could make a recommendation in our, in our motion to add that, you know? Maybe, maybe not. I'd have to get confirmation from you, Jason, or some staff, you know, to see if even that's an option because I really would like to see this project go forward in this location. I just think that there's just so many benefits to having this play out here in this location. But I'm also sensitive to the needs of the, to the residents as well. So I think that we, as a commission, have some, some hard work to do right now, but I just wanted to make, make my comments about it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiggins.
Just a couple more questions. I know for staff, can the zoning manager change their interpretation?
That would be a question for the zoning manager.
Could they, I mean, could they have made a determination that would not have included this being required to be listed as institutional?
I can't speak to what the...
Jason, if I may? We, we looked at the special exception scenario first, and we ran through multiple scenarios. And that's why we're bringing the recommendation of institutional because you've got two different components. You have the residential and the training facility, and it's very difficult to get both of those to work together. Under most scenarios that we ran through, it wasn't possible with a special exception. And that's multiple levels of staff reviewing multiple scenarios.
Did that raise to our attorneys? Did our attorneys look at it, or do you know?
I don't know if legal saw it.
Do you have another example of this type of...
Having worked for a local government and having been the building and zoning official and permitting director for over 40 years, I had to make many, many final determinations on land use and, and I never hesitated to make the most accurate determination I could. But regardless, there were some appeals. So the determination of the zoning official can be appealed. I don't know if that's worth consideration or not, but in any case, their attorney here, Mr. Geller, listed a, one of the provisions that seemed to indicate that this does not automatically approve another request with the institutional land use. Am I understanding that correctly? Or, that seems to be the whole issue, is that because we approved this, they're going to, another request comes in, they're going to automatically have to approve it.
I'm not sure if I understand your question, but the reason for the PD is because any changes to it would require them to come back to you. So that's, I don't know if that answers your question.
So it doesn't relate to another request in the Avalon, Lake Avalon Rural Settlement?
Well, Commissioner, I think what you're asking is if there was another property, a request on another property to go to institutional future land use, would that be a done deal? Would it be automatically approved? And that's not the case. Every case request stands on its own and has to meet compatibility.
Which should provide some level of comfort to the folks in the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement that are concerned about us approving this. Is there, I guess the argument is that they feel that it's going to create another request just like this or similar that, for which, but it, again, it has to go through the entire review and public hearing process. Okay, thank you.
And George, those were, the same, same stuff came about back in the 90s with Gotha Middle. I mean, I talked to people who were there, it was the exact same scenario. We were told the same thing, it does not automatically approve. But what it did is, is it, in my, in my opinion, it enticed people to then try to do something that was hard to do before. And when Braemar came in, they used Gotha Middle. They used that powerfully to sway the commissioner, so...
Then could we make a request through this, from this body, to submit to the Board of County Commissioners a change in the definition of institutional occupancy? As a recommendation? And then that would have to be published and heard and approved as an ordinance change, just like we have in other ordinance changes that went through us onto the Board of County Commissioners?
For the purpose of not allowing additional institutional requests?
Whatever language that we would need to add to the ordinance to provide a level of comfort to the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement residents that this, use of that term could not be applied in the future if, should we approve this because it's, would be changed in the ordinance and clarified to the extent you would call land use change for institutional.
Yeah, this could very well have been a request for a commercial future land use and a PD zoning. At the time that it was discussed, it was, it seemed more appropriate that institutional would be the better category because then, then you, for the same argument that we're making today, then you wouldn't have additional commercial-type, you know, future land uses coming in. So it really narrows the scope of what could be used, I guess, in the future as precedent, for precedent-setting by using the institutional future land use instead of a commercial future land use.
I just know that over the many years that I've been in public service, there's been many changes to the definitions of land uses and zoning that have accommodated other facilities or properties to be developed in Winter Park. And I would think the same process could take place in any jurisdiction in the state of Florida should the local governing body desire to change a zoning definition or determination.
And from everything I did researching is, at the end of the day, the zoning manager makes the call. So, you know, they have the authority to make a call if it qualifies for a special exception or not. If it's not black and white and it's kind of gray, and I think that this is great because when I think of a training facility, like a true training facility, I don't, this, in my, they're farming, they're learning to farm, right? Like, that's, that's, they're living there, farming, like, be like being raised in, you know, in a farming family, you know? I mean, it's not, to me, it's not like a true training, like, they're not learning a, I mean, they're learning, in my opinion, a great skill, but it's not, it's not, you know, it's not a, you know, I think of like MMI as a training institute or something like that, you know, there's lots of that. But I think that that could be the gray area that maybe the zoning manager can kind of review again and take a look at a special exception. It protects a rural district that's really in need of protection, you know, that's, that's going to make it tough. I mean, we have, it will, it will 100% make it tough on them. I guarantee within the next five years, they'll be fighting something very big.
Ms. Cardenas.
Thank you, Chair. So I echo the concerns and the comments from my commissioners. I would welcome the opportunity to see a special exception, whatever we want to call it, of sorts, because like my fellow commissioners have said, and especially Commissioner DeBoer is, thank you for that impassioned speech. I appreciate it and I appreciate your foresight in looking for a solution that I hadn't really thought of in that respect, and I didn't have words for it, and I think you put very good words to it. But I'll go ahead and read my notes and similar to Commissioner Fernandez, I think we're all kind of thinking along the same lines. Also, thank you to the residents. My inbox was super busy this week and I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys sending the emails. It just makes me take a second look, a third look, helps me prepare a little bit better, also helped me have additional conversations with staff to better understand your concerns and, and, from both aspects, from the pros and the cons, from the supporters and the people that have concerns. So thank you for taking the time to write the emails and to be here today. I really do appreciate that. And so, and I appreciate, for the most part, I think we've had really awesome discussions. They were very heartfelt, very professional, and I appreciate that because we can get tense when we're impassioned about certain topics, when we're on different ends of the spectrum. But understanding everybody's position from a very logical and heartfelt position, at least for me, it really helps me see both sides very critically and very logically. So I appreciate all of you being so kind in your comments towards each other. For me, there are three things that I see in this request, and, you know, first and foremost, there's the humanity of it, right? We're human beings, we all need purpose, we all need meaning, and although we have different capabilities, people with, who are less able, disabled, whatever the term is today, they need purpose and meaning in their lives. And they get joy from the things that most of us overlook, right? But the needs are the same. We all need to find purpose, we all need to find meaning in, and our place in this world. And Special Hearts provides this for their population. Then we have the geographical and environmental impact and burden, which is, you know, part of the concerns of the residents. And I had those concerns as well. I saw the number of potential people being on the facilities, and I don't think I know as much about wastewater treatment systems, even though I've been sitting here for a while with Commissioner Pierce. I went and did my research and learned a little bit more about what that entails and the burden that that would place on the environment. So I got some of that as well. And then, you know, the third responsibility we have, we're sitting here, right? And so we have the responsibility of compatibility and consistency with the comprehensive plan. And to echo what my fellow commissioner said, I do believe that this is a good place for this nonprofit. I've got Google Maps pulled up here, I've got Google Earth, I've got all sorts of browsers and engines looking at it from the different entities that provide the mapping services. And I see Equestrian Services around there, I see Ranches, I see Escape with Horses, you know, churches and all these other things. And I do believe this is a good place for it. But I do like the idea that Commissioner DeBoer has brought. it. But I do like the idea that Commissioner DeBoros brought in that maybe we can do something so that, you know, a developer looking at this doesn't come and want to make the community something that it's not. And so I would, you know, encourage staff and anybody that can impact the code and what we could call this to maybe, you know, take a creative look at this so that, as somebody mentioned, it's a battle of two dreams. It doesn't have to be a battle of two dreams. I think both dreams can coexist and everybody can be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
A question for Commissioner from District One. So, so my understanding is that, and if I were a member of the audience, I'd probably be thinking, well, why doesn't the, the Planning and Zoning Commission just make a motion and take a vote to make a special exception? My understanding is that legally, we're not allowed to do that. Is that right?
BZA.
So is it, and I see the big boss just walked into the room and is standing there, so we may ask him. But if, I wonder if there might be another type of motion that could be made by the group that's more of a, giving some recommendation to the surveyor to, to consider, to reconsider a special exception. And that might, and see, I don't know if that's something we can legally do just to, to send that message back for them to consider.
I would hope so. So, you know, I, I found the Crenshaw's case, right? And this is 40, 40 dormitories back in 2022. It was for an increase of their campus, their, their K, K through 12 school, 90 children, including 40 dorms. You know, the way I see it is you go to school and you get trained. You learn, right? You learn when you go to school. These are dormitories. I don't see the difference here with what they're doing. They're just, instead of textbooks and reading, they're learning to farm. And they can apply those skills the same way that people do when they learn to read and, and do math and everything else. So... I, I think institutional is, is absolutely the, the wrong thing. I think a future land use is the wrong thing. I would like to, to, to hear your, your reasoning that why, why this could not be a special exception, given it's a rural, rural district, you know? And that's, that's the best thing in a rural district. It would be something of this.
So good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Alberto Vargas, Planning Division Manager, not the zoning division manager, just to, for the record, to make that clear. And I can speak as to the comprehensive plan and our responsibility from staff's perspective in terms of receiving an application that is reviewed under the umbrella of, of consistency, what is the future land use change or, or amendment being requested for from what it exists today, and the actual rezoning of, of the zoning district, to make sure that those two are consistent with each other, for, for us to be able to move, move this forward. And, and the application that you have been reviewing today, today does that. I, I came down, I have been watching this closely, not only today, but throughout the last several months. We have been meeting internally, not only with staff, but also with the applicant and some representatives of the residents to be able to land, I think, in the same sentiment that you have been commenting today about the, the ultimate use in a rural settlement, which is, is, is unique or special. And, and that's why we have been having some back and forth in terms of what is the best possible future land use associated that would not create complications moving forward. And I, I just wanted to reiterate the basis for that. And, and you heard from the applicant as well, and, and I think the words that he expressed, the, Mr. Attorney expressed, Mr. Rick Keller, he, he said, the, the future land use of institutional is being mandated by staff. We, we do not mandate. We make observations. We make comments about applications that come in. And the previous future land use of splitting the actual boundary of the property was not something that we could support because it would create a lot of inconsistencies with the, with the implementation of their desire development program throughout the 18-plus acres. And, and therefore, the institutional future land use was the one that we landed on. I just want to highlight the fact that between, at the management level, between the planning and zoning divisions, we have to set protocol and follow protocol in terms of Florida law regarding, just like you have to obey under Sunshine rules. We, we cannot meet and discuss this unless there is a meeting set up. And we certainly can do that. We can continue to get into the specifics of alternative options to consider special exceptions or to identify alternative solutions to this. I can tell you that staff has, at the staff level, already met several times, and the determination from the zoning manager is what it is. I, I'm not sure that, that that would be changed in terms of these particular applications, but I do want to leave my interaction today with one particular policy that was already discussed today. And the reason why we believe on the planning side that this will, this particular future land use will not proliferate within the rural settlement, and that is Policy 114, which, again, it states, "An institutional, educational future land use designation may not, or, or may be located in a rural settlement on a limited basis." So that, that's basically with a way that we would continue to interpret any other application that would be of this particular designation in, in a rural settlement. And, and it also stays the same within the rural service area. So this will not serve, in our review perspective, as a precedent within the Lake Avalon Rural Settlement to be a green light for another application, to be justified for compatibility purposes. So I just wanted to reiterate that. And I think Commissioner Wiggins asked a question about that particular policy before. I just wanted to, again, land back on it to let you know that that's one that we will pay very close attention for any future applications that would bring a future land use amendment with this particular designation of institutional uses.
Yeah, you just have to understand, this was said before with Goethe Middle School. Again, I, I'm just going to remind you, this was, this is every, it would, it would not create more planned development within Goethe. And that's, and, and within five years, we have a greater density of one-to-ones with Braemar, you know? And it, it did happen. And that was their argument, Goethe Middle School. We need homes here. We have a whole middle school to fill. You know, I mean, they literally pushed that. And that is why they got it. I think, and I believe, this is a perfect spot as well. I just know the repercussions. You know, why is there a rural boundary, right? Why, why, why is the dotted line there that goes around if we're allowing PD inside rural? I think the best future land use is A1 or what it is now. I really do. I think that they should be allowed to do what they want to do there right now, as it's, I mean, with, but, but, but once that changes, like, I mean, every developer finds that loophole, every one of them, and they hammer on it. And this will be that one for Avalon, for sure.
So, so ju- just, just to add to your statement just now, future land use, the future land use for the property today is, is rural settlement 1 to 5.
Right.
And, and the zoning is, is A1. So, and that, that the request is for both to be changed. That's correct. No, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted for the record to be corrected. So I, I just wanted to share that with you, Mr. Chair and, and the board. I mean, we feel very strongly, we've been looking at this in, in depth for, for many, many different layers of opportunities. And if you would, would like to continue this for the purpose of additional meetings, we certainly can advertise those between the Planning and Zoning Division and some of you maybe even participate and some additional members of the community as well, as well as the applicant. I don't know if that would be to the benefit of the timeline that the applicant has. You would, you would have to ask them, but that's, I could offer that as a, as an alternative option as well.
Thank you. I haven't said anything yet, and I see that Commissioner Wiggins just signed up. But I, I just wanted to say that I, I agree that I think that the change to institutional for the future land use is problematic. I think that it does provide an opening for developers in the future to come in, regardless of what we have been told by staff or the applicant's attorney. We've all lived in Florida and we know how this goes. I think that special exception is the right way to approach it. They are by nature special and exceptional. And they don't provide any sort of legal precedent for, for other, other parcels that are within the rural settlement. So I really would like to see the county reassess that decision and, and accommodate Special Hearts with, with a special exception. Now, also wanted to bring up the issue about the Blueberry Farm. A lot of these, these tough questions we dealt with, with the Blueberry Farm. And it was ultimately approved. And now you guys have found what, to any observer, looks like a much better space. This is a way better space than the Blueberry Farm. You don't have the issue with the chemicals. You don't have the issue with the noise. You're not interrupting the operations of a profitable commercial Blueberry Farm by just being there. So this is a much better space. But I think it's also kind of instruct, instructional about the unintended consequences of changing the zoning and future land use. Because now you guys have got a parcel up there in Tangerine that you're not going to use, that's already had the zoning and future land use changed, I believe. And what's going to happen to that? Now somebody else is going to buy it and take advantage of the future land use or, or zoning on that parcel.
There's nothing changed.
Okay, so you never got that? Okay, good, good. Because I, I remember two meetings with the Blueberry farmers, but I had forgotten what was the outcome.
Withdrew it.
Okay, so you, you got this property, which is a much better location for your, for your program than the Blueberry Farm. Okay.
Chairman, Chairman, Chairman Spears?
Yes.
The applicant is requesting to continue so that they can explore some alternatives.
I, I think that's a great idea. Now, Commissioner Wiggins, you are up on the queue.
Yeah, just a couple of questions on the, is this property on the edge of the rural settlement, or is it in the middle of the rural settlement?
It's on the edge. It's on the edge.
It's on the edge? It's in the center?
If you, if you, if we can go back to the, it's right on the boundary of the rural settlement. If you can go back to the, go to the future land use map.
Okay, forget it then. That's, that's the answer to that question.
That's the boundary of the future, the rural settlement.
Could we not then, I know Planning Board in Winter Park, we could ask if our commissioners consider anything? Can't, cannot we pass a recommendation that a Board of County Commissioners consider making this a special exception as a body, as a appointed body? I mean, they don't, they could take it or leave it, but...
So the, the board cannot decide what is this, the, the, the code, the use table in the code decides what is a special exception? It's, it's not...
Yeah, we would be, we would be passing in ordinance to change the use code.
Oh, you could, you could...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That we can, it would have to be done by ordinance. Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we, we did that numerous times in Winter Park for 40 years when a special use or wasn't properly addressed and did not do harm to, or set a bad precedent. Anyway, that's my comments. And thank you all very much for, for coming today.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So with that, I have heard that the applicant wishes for a continuance?
Yes, sir. It makes sense based on all the comments here that this is a, a, a perfect location as, as was stated. It is compatible. It is consistent, except for this concern of setting some sort of precedent that I'm, I'm not exactly getting that. But, but I think we ought to take some time and explore special exceptions, tax amendments, ordinance changes, any other mechanism that's, that conceivably could allow Special Hearts Farm to go here.
Thank you.
Okay. Without, I guess if it's a continuance, we need a date certain. Or, or it could just be...
One month. Post pound. So we'd have to set up meetings. It could likely require an advertised meeting if it's a meeting between the, the zoning manager and the planning manager. It may be best to postpone it and we'll readvertise it when it's ready to come back.
Then, then it seems that a postpone, in the absence of a date certain for, for the subsequent hearing, it seems that a postpone is the most appropriate way.
Yeah, that, that works. And, and just the other piece of information, Jason, can you verify if it goes the route of a special exception, this will not come back to you? It will not come back to your board?
Even for the rezoning?
It would be BCA.
BCA.
Yeah, because there will not be a rezoning.
Okay.
Keeps its...
All right. Well, I, I think with that, I think that that completes our work for the day. Is there anything else? Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to...
Okay.